May tenth, twenty twenty one, meeting of the Ashland zoning board of appeals. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast by W A C A. The town of Ashland, in response to the COVID nineteen coronavirus, is currently following the guidance from the Ashland Board of Health, Massachusetts Department of Public Health, and the C D C regarding the virus in steps communities can take to prevent the spread. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general laws, chapter thirty A, section twenty, all public meetings are being conducted remotely. To participate remotely from a computer, please use the link that is listed on the posted agenda, or you may call the telephone number that's also listed on the agenda and dial in. I will call the meeting to order and we'll take a roll call of the Z B A. I, John Trefeathen, am here.
Hi, Nathan Bandam here.
Brian?
Hi, Brian Forreston here.
Hi, Stuart Siegel, I'm here.
And Chuck, you're on mute, if you could unmute yourself.
Hi, Chuck Green, I'm here, thanks.
Thank you. We are also joined this evening by, as usual, by, with Emma Snellings, the Assistant Town Planner, and also by Peter Machek, Town Planner. Town Council is not able to join us this evening. We have a number of people here on behalf of the applicant this evening. They are represented by attorney Robert Buckley. Good evening, Attorney Buckley, good to see you again.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
And let's, I guess, just sort of discuss what we're going to cover this evening. I know at the, this is, uh, well, first off, let me read the, let me read the meeting notice, which I suppose, even though this is the fourth meeting we've had, I should do it. The Ashland zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing via Zoom video conference to hear the petition of U A Senior Manager L L C, Care of Allen and Major Associates, Inc., requesting a comprehensive permit per general laws, chapter forty B, section twenty dash twenty-three, to allow for the development of a one hundred and eighty-unit age restricted rental community comprised of one hundred and fifty-six rental garden apartments and twenty-four townhouse-style rental units. The development will include two four slash five-story apartment-style buildings, four townhouse buildings with six units each, a clubhouse, four detached parking garages, an access road, parking areas, amenities, and all supporting site features and infrastructure required to support the proposed development. The property in question is located at Zero Memorial Drive, assessors map thirteen, law one fifty-four, in the rail transit district. And parties wishing to be heard in this matter shall appear at the time and place indicated above, and materials may be viewed by appointment at Town Hall during normal business hours or online at the town of Ashland website. As I previously mentioned, this hearing was opened on February twenty-second. It was continued at the request of the applicant first to March eighth and then to March twenty-second, and the hearing resumed on April twelfth and April twenty-sixth, and we hear this evening on May tenth. At the last meeting, we concluded with a presentation by the applicant's traffic consultant. At that time, we did not have the benefit of the town's peer review traffic consultant's report that subsequently has been submitted, and I note that our peer review consultant is here this evening, and welcome. And I also note that Mr. Mills, the applicant's traffic consultant, is here as well. Attorney Buckley, does it make sense to start with, with the traffic issues, and then we can veer off after that?
I think that makes all the sense. It's practical, and I believe we have Phil Codaro here from Allen and Major, and I believe on the peer review on the site civil and other issues, there are a few remaining items which we hope to have resolved in the near future. So right now, the major issue outstanding is traffic. As the chair correctly stated, we did a overview of the traffic last time. Dan presented it. I don't know if the discretion of the chair whether to continue that overview or to hear from your consultant, and we'll react to the way you want to proceed.
Well, thank you, Attorney Buckley. I think it might be helpful for Mr. Mills to provide just a brief overview. Once again, I know just looking at the screen that we have several people in attendance who were not in attendance previously. I know Ms. Braun, our peer review traffic consultant, was not at the, the meeting last time, so perhaps Mr. Mills could provide a brief overview of his report. I assume, Attorney Buckley, you have had an opportunity to review the peer review traffic report?
Our consultants have, I have not seen it personally, but that's
Now, as long as the ones that are in full knowledge have seen it, that's good. The council is always the last one that needs to know.
Probably the one who can't understand it, right?
There you go. Mr. Mills, with that having been said, if you would be kind enough to identify yourself and give us a brief overview, recognizing that we did listen to a presentation from you last, at the last meeting.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Daniel Mills, I'm the Principal Traffic Engineer with M D M Transportation Consultants, offices in Marlboro. At the last hearing, I did walk you through the traffic assessment that was prepared really in response to a comment that we received through the project team relative to turn lane in level service analysis on the site driveway. So our analysis focused in on identifying the amount of traffic that could be expected from the hundred and eighty-unit senior residential development and the, the flow of traffic onto Memorial Drive. I indicated that we conducted a, what's called a level service analysis, which is sort of a grading, school grading exercise relative to how traffic functions at an intersection, in a range from level service A to F. In the case of Memorial Drive, intersection with the site driveway, we graded that as approximately level service A to B, depending on the specific time period we're looking at. So the operation is expected to be fairly well. The traffic volume at the site, coming in and out of the site, is expected to range from about thirty-six to forty-five vehicles per hour, and that's a two-way flow. In the morning, we would expect the majority of flow to exit from the site for those that do live, are residents at this development, even though they're, it's a age restricted development, we would expect that some folks still work and are employed and go to their job or run errands in the mornings. So we expect the majority of folks would be leaving the property in the morning, and conversely, in the evening, we looked at a time period during the commuter rush hour, which ranges from between about four in the afternoon to about six in the evening, and we would expect the majority of folks would be returning from either the errands or unemployment at that time. And again, that was about forty-five trips coming in and out of the site during that period. So these, again, we relied on industry resources and standards and applied those in preparing our traffic assessment. We did receive comments from your peer review consultant. And I can go through those, or if you want your consultant to go through those, that's, that's fine, too. We have prepared a draft response that we were hoping to issue to the board today, but we are holding off to issue that tomorrow, but we feel that we can address the sixteen comments that they provided to us.
Well, why don't we, why don't we hear from our peer traffic consultant with what her report is, and then if you wish to comment on that, a reply verbally, I mean, I always prefer to have a written reply that I can review, but we'll, we're here tonight and we'll, we'll cover what we can cover, and if we have further questions after we receive the written report, then we can take that up at our next meeting. But as I did indicate, our peer traffic consultant did issue a report dated May fourth, twenty twenty-one, consisting of five pages, and the report will be entered into the record. It was from Kirsten Braun, P E, an associate with the firm of Ron Mueller and Associates of Hopkinton. And having said all that, I'll turn the matter over to you, Ms. Braun.
Thank you, and thanks for having me. Just for the record again, Kirsten Braun, Traffic Engineer with Ron Mueller Associates. So we did perform a full review of the traffic memorandum, as well as the site plan associated with the Arbella Ashland Age Restricted Apartment Development. I'm just going to run through my letter quickly, because not all the comments really warranted necessary responses, but we just provided an overview of our thoughts on, on the memo, as well as some of, some recommendations and comments. So as proposed, one hundred and eighty apartment units are to be constructed on-site with access via a new driveway on the M B T A access road, otherwise known as Memorial Drive. The memorandum focused on the intersection of the M B T A access road and the proposed site driveway. We found the study area was acceptable, given the land use and the site location. The traffic counts were conducted in June of twenty nineteen, so this was under pre-pandemic conditions. It was recommended, though, that the applicant confirmed that the Sears Apartments next door were operating at full capacity or near full capacity at the time these counts were conducted, just to make sure we were accounting for all the traffic on Memorial Drive. The counts weren't seasonally adjusted, however, we did review mass stop permanent count station in the area, and we did find that traffic during the month of June is typically about four percent above average, so therefore the, the counts didn't need to be seasonally adjusted. The traffic volumes were also grown by a half a percent per year to reach future conditions consistent with mass stop guidelines. Again, based on review of some of that mass stop permanent count station, we did find that traffic in the area has grown by about one percent per year, as, at least between twenty seventeen and twenty nineteen. But we also understand that, that Memorial Drive has ample capacity, and therefore the use of a higher growth rate probably wouldn't materially affect any traffic operations in the area, so we aren't recommending that any revised analyses be prepared. We also noted that no site-specific developments were included as part of that background growth. We just recommend that the applicant confirm with the town of Ashland that that is, in fact, the case, as typically you'd want to includes, include any traffic associated with other developments in that background traffic growth. We also noted that they used I T E land use code, which again is the nationally accepted trip generation rates for senior adult housing, to, to estimate the traffic to be generated by the development, which we found to be acceptable, given, given the site plan, and as such, as, as was previously mentioned, thirty-six trips are expected during the weekday A M peak hour, and forty-five additional trips are expected during the weekday P M peak hour. So a capacity analysis were also performed, as mentioned, at the site driveway intersection with Memorial Drive, and we did find that the site driveway is going to operate at acceptable conditions during both peak hours at level service A or B, and the M B T A access road will also operate at level service A during all time periods, so, so the impact of the traffic is, is really minimal. One thing we did know is that available site distances at the proposed site driveway intersection with the M B T A access road were not measured. Site distances are shown on the plans, however, the required site distances should be based on the speed of traffic. It is recommended that speed data be collected on the M B T A access road and the available site distances be compared with minimum requirements as established by ASJO, which is based on the eighty-fifth percentile speeds. And again, it's, it is further recommended to ensure that any signs or landscaping are, are not within these site, site triangles. We also did a review of the site plans and did have a couple of comments with that, with those as well. One of our, our more larger comments was that we noted that proposed our twelve-foot-wide travel lanes and four-foot shoulders. We do recommend that the applicant look into proposing with five-foot shoulders. Given the topography of the site, ADA compliant sidewalks are likely unable to be provided along one side of the driveway, so this five-foot shoulder would act as a full bike lane and also provide a means for pedestrians to walk up the road. These reduced travel lanes widths will also likely slow travel, travel speeds up and down that access road. We also looked at the guardrail locations, and we do agree with, with where the applicant is proposing to place all of comments. We, we do recommend that terminal end sections be installed on all four guardrail ends, and we also suggest that on the driver approach ends, that curved sections of guardrail be used to flare the terminal end sections away from oncoming traffic. We also looked at the intersection, the layout of the intersection, the site driveway intersection with Memorial Drive, and we do recommend that the stop line on the driveway intersection be located five feet back from the crosswalk, and the stop signs be placed adjacent to that stop line. We also took a look, a vehicle turning movement plan was submitted to the town of Ashland, based on the town of Ashland's fire truck, and it did show that they can navigate the access road. We do just recommend that this be confirmed with the town fire department, including the potential need for accessibility to all sides of the building. And that's about it for the quick summary of, of our traffic report. A lot of our, a lot of our comments were just that, comments, and didn't necessarily warrant, you know, any changes to the plans or traffic study. But yeah, I'm available to answer any, any questions the board, the board may have, you know, more in-depth, specific questions.
Why don't, why don't we, why don't we do this? Why don't we ask the, the board members if they have any questions? And once that is done, we can hear from Mr. Mills once again, entertain further questions from the board members, and then entertain any questions from members of the public on the transportation or travel reports that we've been, been discussing. With that being said, Brian, do you have any questions of Ms. Braun?
I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay, Nathan?
Um, no, not right now.
Okay, Stu?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have one question. In your traffic analysis, is there any way to determine how many guests will be visiting and leaving the complex?
So generally, in those trip generation estimates, that sort of activity is included in those trip, trip generation rates. It would also include not only just resident, but guest activity into and out of the site. I can't give a specific number, but that would be included in the, in the trip generation estimates.
Thank you. Chuck, any questions?
I, I have no questions, thanks.
And I have no questions at this time. Mr. Mills, would you like to, to reply?
Sure, yes, thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for the comments from your consultant. So we are in agreement generally with all of the comments that were made and willing to incorporate those into the plan set. I'll just reiterate them, just purposes of the record, and we'll be following up with the written, written report, but for tonight's hearing, there was a comment about the Sears Apartments next door, were they occupied or fully occupied when our traffic counts were conducted in twenty nineteen? And we reached out to the, the development management team, and they indicated that in June twenty nineteen, when our council conducted, the apartments were approximately ninety-five percent full or greater. So that's provides a reasonable level of comfort that our traffic counts conducted in twenty nineteen are appropriate for the analysis. The other comment hearing tonight is the, are there any specific developments in the area? We did reach out to the town planner. We did hear that there was a planning underway for a new Metro West Y M C A potentially on the Memorial Drive access road. We don't have any data for that, we don't know what the program is or the size is specifically. It's a longer-term project, oh, three years plus, and it's in very, much in the early planning stages from what we understand. So that particular project, given it's unknowns, was not included in our, our traffic study. Similarly, we don't expect really the Y M C A traffic to make its way too far north towards the M B T A station, certainly some would, certainly some of the site traffic would venture down to, to use that facility, but in general, we don't think the two projects would really intertwine all that much. With regards to site distance at the site driveway, we did have speed data from our twenty nineteen count, so we will be providing that in our report. We, we have shown that, we did conduct an official documentation of the site distance, what's required based on ASJO requirements, and we'll be providing that, but the, the requirements are met. And the note that they be coming out of the site driveway, don't, don't construct any signs or landscaping that would obstruct the sightlines. This property has the benefit of a wide side path, wide shared use path, and as a, a graph strip buffer, so really that whole front fifteen seconds or so is cleared from the, the driveway out to the roadway, so based on the site plan as well, we don't see any obstructions being placed in that, that sightline. And again, the other comments were related to the site plan. The applicant is willing to make the modifications to the pavement markings to reduce the travel lane from eleven feet to five to, sorry, reduce it from twelve feet to five feet and increase the shoulder by one foot to accommodate the bicycles and potential pedestrians. The guardrail is an absolutely appropriate comment, and the applicant will redesign the, the guardrail, the end sections, so that they are flared and curved appropriately. With regards to the stop sign, the stop line at the site driveway intersection with Memorial Drive, those will be adjusted as well according to their, their comment. And from my understanding, that the team has met with the Ashland Fire Department staff, they've given some comments, they've been incorporated. Ashland Fire Department obviously reserves the right to provide additional comments with regards to access, and we do expect those as the permitting and design advance. If you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank, thank you very much. Brian, any questions of Mr. Mills? You're on mute, Brian. Still on mute.
How about now?
Sounds good.
All right. Yeah, I think you just got a little confused when you're talking about the going from twelve feet to eleven feet and five feet to four feet, but I think I understand what you meant by that. And I, I do have concerns about the, the roadway being used as pedestrian and bicycle lane traffic as well, which I don't know if it's appropriate to bring it up at this time or not, but it seems to be somewhat addressed in this review and your review, that bikes and people will be walking up and down this street on a four or five-foot-wide shoulder. So I, I do reserve the right to throw comments in about that again as we go along.
Just gonna say, Brian, I think we can probably address that with Mr. Codaro at, at some point when we talk further about the, the site, and he's nodding his head yes, so that, that would probably be, be a good thing. Any other questions, sir?
Nope, that's it, that's it for me.
Nathan, any questions?
No, I'd echo Brian's concerns about pedestrians on the roadway, but otherwise, it sounds like the concerns that were raised are going to be addressed, so I'm, I'm okay.
Okay, Stu, questions from you?
No, sir, I'm okay.
Thank you, and Chuck, how about you? Any questions? You need to unmute and verbally, there you go.
You can't put that in the minutes.
I can't, I can't put in a thumbs up or anything, no. Okay, I have no questions, I will, you know, reiterate what Brian and Nathan said, I think all of our concerns about pedestrians walking on the, on the drive, I think will be addressed better to Mr. Codaro, but I do want to thank the Mr. Mills and the applicant for agreeing with the, to make the changes suggested by our peer review consultant, it makes it our job a little bit easier. I will now ask, is there anyone else here who has a question for either Ms. Braun or Mr. Mills concerning the traffic reports? If so, if you could raise your hand, and as we have done in the past, Emma will identify you. Your question, if you would please, should be addressed to me, and we will then have the appropriate party respond to it. Emma, I do see one hand being raised, is there anyone else that wishes to be heard?
I don't see any other hands, and I've invited Mr. DeSoni to unmute.
Okay, thank you, good evening, Mark DeSoni. And a good thorough report there, and I have maybe a couple of follow-up questions, if it's okay, Mr. Chairman.
Well, ask the question, and we'll see whether it's okay or not, how's that?
I'm not gonna try to jump ahead way too soon, like I did the last time I was on. Okay, I'm, I'll talk about the, the site distance, and the, and whoever this, whoever can answer, the traffic count, did the traffic count, count inside where the houses are, where the condom, where the buildings are, in the residential area before the driveway? Was that counted in there?
Mr. Mills, and as much as you did the traffic count, if you would answer?
So I'm, I'm confused as to which property is being
I'm, I'm talking, I'm talking about the whole development area with, where the cars back out of the driveways.
No, we do not out of the park, so the, the proposed site is expected to have some driveways and some parking lots, we did not specifically look at individual parking spaces or driveways.
So you, so in other words, for that, you didn't actually think, I'd say, yeah, vehicles would back out and travel down to this, to this, to the driveway exits, and that wouldn't be moving vehicle traffic, right?
As it pertains to, may I, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, you may, I was just gonna ask Mark if he could, or Mr. DeSoni, if he could clarify the question, I didn't understand it, but more importantly, Mr. Mills, if you understand it, you can answer it.
No, I'm looking for some, some elaboration on the comments, because I'm not, I'm not certain of it myself.
Any move-in vehicle is called traffic, on-road traffic, even if it's an entrance and, and a residential drive around, like a road, like a rotary. So when a vehicle backs out of the driveway and drives down to leave and then come back up and go back in driveway, that's vehicular traffic movements, right?
Chairman, I, I believe those numbers were included, because that would be an exit and an entry.
Exactly. In the, in the report, Mr. DeSoni, there were estimates by Mr. Mills's firm of there were estimates by Mr. Mills's firm of the number of vehicles that would be entering and exiting the development at peak hours in the AM and PM and also during the total total daytime. So there were estimates. Obviously, they can't put a a traffic counter up there because there's, there are no cars there to to count at the moment. Did I state that correctly, Mr. Mills?
Yes, it's a it's a fair statement. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, then, okay, that's a step one then. And to go down for the site to with it, to put a stop sign in in the the five foot white line that was I think it was Mrs. Mrs. Braun was saying that in the reports for on site and distance. Wouldn't that sight line be completely cleared? So it could be a a it's good. You said, I think you said it's got to be completely clear so drivers can see traffic going up, down, both left and right when they come out and when they enter. Is that what is that what you meant by by clearing one of the stop sign right at the end?
Ms. Braun?
Yeah, so our our first recommendation, when we were looking at a site plan, was just ensure that the stop line for that site driveway is five feet back from the crosswalk where the shared use path crosses the driveway. And furthermore, just to line up the 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 stop signs with that stop line. And then with regards to the site distance, Mr. Mills did did mention that there should be adequate site distance there, but our suggestion was just to make sure that there aren't any signs or landscaping. You know, within the air, within those site triangles on the site driveway that would obstruct a motorist's view of traffic, like you said, either going up or down Memorial Drive.
Mr. Chairman, I I believe that I believe that we would be agreeable to a condition that would require the applicant to maintain that the vegetation and landscaping in that area to provide for adequate sight line distances.
Very good. Thank you, Attorney Buckley. I think that would solve the the concerns.
Okay, one more, one last one. Back to to consultant, through your chair to her. She she mentioned some sort of speed limit recommendation. Can I ask in in terms of what speed limit conditions would be suggested?
We weren't necessarily suggesting speed limit restrictions. We more recommended that the applicant collects speed data on Memorial Drive, which would help us to determine when you find out the 85th percentile speeds. That's how you determine how much site distance you need, looking either direction from the driveway. So that was really to just develop those site triangles and and what what sort of site distance we would need looking north and south of the driveway.
So you discussed, and you're in your charge, you're not, you're not thinking of, I saw that a speed miles per hour thinking in that area because it is a residential buildup. So it's gonna be just a regular speed and and on Memorial Drive there to the T to where the train is. Now, what is that speed on Memorial Drive supposed to be?
Mark, I don't know. And if I understood Mr. Mills correctly, that when they did their analysis, they did have speeds recorded and that's going to be, that information will be provided in his supplemental response. So why don't we wait for for that? Because we're not at the moment dealing with what the proper speed should be for for Memorial Drive.
I take it that my last thinking question would be, even though it's posted, it's not on this development.
There's been, there's been no speeds posted on on this internal driveway. That's correct.
Okay.
That subject hasn't been discussed as yet.
And Memorial Drive itself, without the driveway, straight to straight. That's why I was asking about the posted speed is how fast has Memorial Drive itself? If it can't be answered, it can't be answered. Thank you.
No problem. Very good. If there are no further questions. Thank you, Mr. Mills. Thank you, Ms. Braun. If there is no further reason, I think you can both be, or I can excuse Ms. Braun from the rest of the meeting. You're welcome to listen to the rest of the meeting, but I don't think there's any need for it. Peter, would you agree with that?
Yes, I do, Chairman. And I just want to say, Christine, it's great to meet you virtually and thank you so much for the review and your analysis of the project.
Very good. I'll leave it to you as to what you wish to do with you, your expert, as far as having him remain.
Well, if your consultant is leaving, I think it's appropriate. If Dan would like to leave, that that's appropriate.
Very good. Okay, moving, moving on. It strikes me that the next sort of the next logical thing to take up would be the peer review, a letter from GCG Associates dated April 26 of 2021 that had a number of comments and items to be addressed. I know the applicant has not submitted a written responses yet. I believe Attorney Buckley, you were referencing that at the at the outset of the meeting. So how would you wish to go forward at tonight's meeting with that?
We could give an oral summary of the of the of the items, but it may be prudent. I believe that we're we're confident we're going to be able to address all of the concerns. And there were only a few open items. It may, it may be more productive to have, for the record, a written response. Is your peer review consultant here this evening or?
He is not.
Yeah, so my sense is that to provide a written response is probably the most effective way of addressing it and hopefully there'll be no outstanding items in a, what we refer to as a clean letter can be delivered to the board in in advance of the next meeting, which would then limit, I think, the open items to perhaps a discussion of the waiver request and then to proceed accordingly.
I think that would be, that would be fine. I would prefer frankly to have a written written response to our peer review consultants items, which we could consider and then take it up rather than have an oral report, which may generate questions, which don't really get us anywhere until until we see the written report. Okay. That being said, we're obviously not in a position to begin to look at waiver requests if we get to that point. Perhaps we could discuss the issues raised by the Design Review Committee. I know they met last Thursday and the applicant was there and made a made a presentation. They issued a one page review and a draft set of minutes. Have you and your client seen that, Attorney Buckley?
I have not seen the the summary, but I've had discussions with my client on the on the issues and I I think it is safe to say that as our architect at the last board meeting summarized for the board that our our objective was to capture, to the extent you can, a traditional New England setting for this project. Bearing in mind that in some respects it is subjective and to do it in a cost effective manner. And I think that has been achieved. I think that the the major objective or the major charge to the architectural team was to create a sense of community. And I think, as Anthony indicated at the last meeting, the architect that the focal point became the clubhouse and to try to use that as a center point and have all the activity centered around that amenity. And, you know, there's always going to be a difference as to what one would prefer from a design standpoint, but we tried to do a simple New England village concept with with clean lines and focus everything from a directional standpoint to that clubhouse. For the chair and the board's information, I actually took a ride out to Ashland yesterday and drove around town and you know, I looked at the the historical building and some other buildings in town that kind of echoed that clean presentation. So the one thing we did listen very intently to with respect to the design review is the comments of that was our objective to create a sense of place, then perhaps look at enhancing and making the the landscaping more robust. And I think we're going to make a commitment to do that. We'll be submitting a revised landscaping plan to the board for their consideration.
Thank you, Attorney Buckley. Speaking only only for myself and not for the other members of the board. I appreciate it. All the the comments from the Design Review Committee. But I don't see it as the role of the Zoning Board of Appeals to redesign the applicant's project from an architectural point of view. There may be differences of opinion on that from other members of the board. But what I was particularly taken with was the comments of the concerning the landscaping and the 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 need for what is perhaps described as more robust landscaping and I think all of the board would be most interested in receiving and considering that that plan. Recognizing that one of the members of the Design Review Committee is a I'm not sure of her exact title, but she is a landscape, a professional landscape designer. And her comments, I think, were most most worthy as well. So perhaps we could address all of that once the revised landscaping plan is has been submitted to us. Would that make sense?
That that makes a lot of sense. And again, that that dovetails very nicely with what our objective, as I said, and and embarking on this project was to create that sense of central space with areas where there could be congregation and and define it as the public, public, public or private spaces. So we're going to take a hard look at the landscaping. I think we can employ the landscaping to achieve that. But architectural design is always subjective and the applicant here has a long track record of doing these projects successfully. And so we're trying to incorporate the 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 area, period area of the architecture that exists in Ashland. But to supplement that with the objective of the congregation of the of the residents. So we'll get you that revised landscaping plan shortly.
All right, good. And before I get too far out on a limb by myself, I I should probably check with my fellow board members to make sure they're okay with with what I proposed and you've agreed to. Brian, what we're talking about, okay, as far as timing?
It's okay with me. Yeah, I like the the direction we're heading.
Okay, Nathan, how about for you?
Yeah, I'm always in favor of waiting for a written product before we.
Okay. Excellent. Stu?
Fine with me, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And Chuck?
Yeah, fine with me. Thank you.
Okay, so we will we will delay this further discussion of this issue until we get the robust landscaping review. Also, in the in the record for the hearing is a is going to be a two page memorandum that was received by the Planning Department today from Catherine Rooney of 136 Fountain Street, Ashland, Massachusetts. Again, Emma, has the, has this been forwarded to the applicant?
No, the letter was not. And I'll make sure that happens.
Okay. It does address issues of concerning landscaping and I would urge you to have your landscapers take a look at it as a consider their revised revised report. Okay, that being said, where do we go this evening? We basically completed what we can complete tonight and take everything else next week?
I believe so, Mr. Chairman. I think we owe you some materials and hopefully those materials will close the loop and provide you with the basis that you need for your deliberations.
Very good. Okay, next scheduled meeting is May 24. Is, would someone like to make a motion? Brian, I'll look to you to continue the hearing till Monday, May 24 at 7:00 PM.
Oh, moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, John Drifethven in favor?
Chuck Greenham in favor.
Aye, Brian Forrest, all in favor?
Nathan Ben in favor?
Aye, Stuart Siegel, I'm in favor.
Very good. Okay, this matter is and thank you for for your cooperation. We're making, we're making good progress.
Thank you and everyone stay healthy.
We will. Okay, we now will be going on to our second item this evening on the agenda. And will, it's a public holding zero independence way, seeking a variance and a special permit. The Ashland Zoning Board of Appeals, this is the meeting notice that was published in the paper. The Ashland Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, May 10, 2021, at 7:00 PM via Zoom video conference to hear the petition of the Town of Ashland requesting a special permit and variance for Chapter 48, Section 6 and 10 of the Massachusetts zoning act and Chapter 282, Sections 3.1, Principal Uses 3.3, Nonconforming Uses in Structures, and 9.2, Board of Appeals, and 9.3, Special Permits of the Ashland Bylaws to Allow for the Construction of a Municipal Facility, Parenthesis Water Booster Station. The variance is requested due to encroachment in the front yard setback. The property in question is located at Zero Independence Lane, Assessors Map 3, Lot 75, in the RA zoning district. District parties wishing to be heard on this matter should appear at the time and place indicated above. Materials may be viewed at Town Hall during normal business hours or at the Ashland website. I have asked our town planner, Peter Magic, to make a brief presentation of to the board and to the public to sort of bring us up to date as to how we find ourselves where we are tonight. This project has a long, long history in the town and before the the ZBA. And I thought it would help put the application in context if Peter would give us just a little little background, if he would.
All right. Thank you, Chairman. And 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 I hope all the ZBA members are doing well. I know I've seen a couple of you in and out of Town Hall, but I hope everything is going great. First, I want to introduce from the town side, a couple of people, two men in particular. First, Doug Small, who is the DPW Director, Doug. And then second, I want to introduce Greg Eldridge, Eldridge from Haley and Ward. Greg has been the Greg has been the our town consultant concerning all things water and sewer for a very long time, probably the better half of 2025 years. And so Greg is an expert at the town's sewer and water system. So just to kind of set the table a little bit. The Robert Hillway 40B dates back to 2009 when the town put a RFP out to try to attract a developer to come in and build affordable housing units up on the property off of Independence Lane on the town-owned piece of property. They they attracted the company EA Fish. They came in, they permitted the project. After litigation in 2013, this zoning board reissued a decision and as part of that decision and one of the many conditions within that 40B decision, it mentions of the applicant, in this case EA Fish, will work with the town to develop a booster pump station due to the lack of water pressure on Independence Lane. Please note, Independence Lane is permitted in 1997 as a subdivision known as Oregon Heights by Polk Company. I think just talking to public, you know, and residents that live upon Independence Lane, water pressure has always been an issue within this subdivision. And so this was something that's always been kind of talked about throughout the years in North Carolina. So tonight, I would say moving backwards and so about, I would say, 18 months ago, EA Fish came into town and they actually started the project, right? And we were having this ongoing conversation, Greg, Doug, myself and the team in Town Hall concerning this booster pump station, locating this booster pump station. So after many conversations and I would say outreach with the public and the residents that live upon Independence Lane, we've asked the the town has come to the to the location of citing the booster pump station, which is known as parcel B, which is an open space parcel, which after researching, comes to find out was actually owned by the homeowners association of Oregon Heights, Independence Lane. Therefore, with the sighting, the first step within the citing of this booster pump station, the town through the select board and at this past town meeting moved to do a land taking, easement taking along all of parcel B to site the booster pump station. Now, that happened and currently the town has taken an easement from the homeowners association to places booster pump station, which will, in theory, help create higher water pressures for the resident residents of Independence Lane and the Robert Hillway Senior Housing Development. Now, the second step in citing this is when we, the town, and with the help of Lisa Mead, we reviewed the actual land uses, the land use codes within our actual bylaws. This booster pump station falls under quote unquote essential services. And so this essential service requires a zoning board of appeals special permit to be cited in the residential A zoning district. Just for the fact of the matter, I just want to read verbatim what a central service the definition is. An essential service within the Ashland zoning bylaws is a service provided by a public service corporation and or government agency through the erection, the construction, the alteration or or maintenance of gas, electrical, steam, or water transmission or distribution. And that's where that is this box is triggered. Excuse me, in collection, communication supply disposal systems, whether underground or overhead, but not limited, but not including wireless communication facilities. Facilities necessary for the provisions of essential services, including poles, wires, drains, sewers, pipes, conduits, cables, fire boxes, police call boxes, traffic signals, hydrants, and other similar equipment throughout connections there within. And so here we have found that this water pump station, which is a considered a essential service through the disposal and, excuse me, the transmission of a water transmission and distribution requires a special permit from the zoning board of appeals. So here tonight, the town with the help of Greg and Doug, we are here to apply for a special permit for this booster pump station. Before I ask Greg to kind of maybe go into a little bit more depth of what a booster pump station is and how it operates with the help of Doug, I just kind of want to first back off and ask the board if if you may have any questions of what I just kind of stated.
Brian, questions? Look, you're muted.
I don't have any questions at this time.
Nathan, any questions at this time?
No questions.
Okay, Stu?
No questions, sir.
And Chuck?
No, no questions.
And Peter, I'm I'm all set. Why don't we get started with the application? And thank you for the for the background as to how we find ourselves here with a petition from the town.
All right, Greg, do you mind just kind of talking a little bit about the booster pump station and the citing of it?
Sure. Thank you. Go ahead.
Would the board like to us to bring up the plans?
If if you'd like to, I think we've all we've all seen the plan. We have a copy of it, but if it would assist Mr. Eldridge in his presentation or or Mr. Small on his presentation, that's fine.
Well, I can, Greg, you can kind of just walk us through the booster pump station.
Sure. All right. Thank you for having us tonight. Greg Eldridge, Haley Ward, and as Peter said, have been providing services to Ashland for many years. Ashland hired us two years ago to do a study on locating the booster station. And when we say booster station means a water pump system to boost the pressure into an area because the area, obviously, Independence Lane is on a on a hill elevated and they were experiencing low water pressure during various times of the day. So we looked at that area, did some pressure testing on hydrants, looked at the water distribution system and then had to locate where we could put a booster station. And we're limited in two locations. One that we've selected at the end of near Oak Street. And the other one is at the other end of Independence Lane, which is on Oregon Road. The Oak Street end was the one that was selected mainly because of this open space area and power. We had three-phase power on this end of the street. On Oak, on Oregon Road, there was no three-phase power for the booster station that's necessary. So we selected this this end of the Independence Lane. It connected to Oak Street Water Main, which was a good connection point. And basically, the pump station is going to pull the water through it. There's four, there's going to be four pumps in there, three for general use and one for fire protection. So it's a larger pump. So as pressure, it monitors the pressure. As pressure drops, it speeds up the pumps, brings on additional pumps when necessary to meet the system demand on the hill. So the the station itself, the type of station selected was an above-ground station. The footprint is on your drawings. It's about just over 20 feet long and just under 10 feet wide. A single story about nine foot eight in height set on the lots. It also has a emergency generator in case of power outages. That's required per D Mass D E P requirements for a booster station. That's also set on the site. We've kept them as close as possible on the site to to limit the the space used. And we we located the station as far away from the the frontage, the sidewalk as we could. But if you see on the the plans, there's a detention pond right behind us. Obviously, we couldn't get into that area. So as Peter mentioned, the variance also is set back from the frontage. So that's one one variance that we're looking for. We can't move this station any location, any direction to get any further distance away from the road. As far as I I think that's probably describes the the station, how we got to that location and the type of station that we have. I don't know if you have any questions to this point?
Soon as I unmute myself, I have none. Brian, any questions at this point?
Nope, sounds pretty straightforward.
Nathan, any questions?
Questions.
Stu?
No questions, sir.
And Chuck?
No questions.
Okay. Why don't we then go forward and continue on with the with the presentation and whoever is going to be going further or?
Doug, can I just jump in here real quick? I'm sorry. Doug, do you want to just brief the board on a little bit about the siding and some of the conversations we had with the residents?
First of all, thank you for having me and Greg. So, yeah, a couple of weeks ago, we met with several residents that lived near, that abut the the site. And we had a, I think it was a really healthy conversation as far as their their concerns. So what so what Greg did is Greg put together a letter. The letter is dated May 6. And it addresses some of these concerns. And basically, I think we're all on board with what what these conditions were. And it'd be good if we could, Peter, I don't know how the formality as far including that letter in this decision.
Yeah, I can just brief the board. So if you if I may, Chairman, some of the residents of Independence Lane reached out and and their major concern was that this building was not going to be a steel-skinned building into a concrete block building. And so last week, two weeks ago, Doug, myself, Greg and our town manager, Michael Herbert, met on site. We actually met with the residents that have funded this property. And and at this current time, you know, we're looking to cite the facility. But then the Town of Ashland was aware of their residential concerns within their neighborhood. And Greg Eldridge was was put together a letter representing the town, really representing the project, citing that the town is is understands and that the residents have this concern of the aesthetics of this building. And so therefore, after the fact that once this building is you know, hopefully cited and running, the town will come back and actually side the building with 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 a with a more of an appropriate siding, whether that be vinyl siding, hardy plank. And then also to plant some vegetation and some buffering within this parcel or on this parcel, known as parcel B, to help screen, screen the structure. But also that just kind of make better neighbors, make this building, you know, fit into the community in a more aesthetic and pleasing manner, I would say. And so that was a letter which Greg put together, which was sent out today by Emma, which just states the town's commitment that the town is is going to meet, is trying to meet all the concerns that the residents will have while providing higher water pressure for Independence.
And Peter, it's my understanding, and we do have the the two-page letter dated May 6. And it's my understanding that the applicant is requesting that if the board grants the variance and grants the special permit that we include as conditions in that decision, the items set forth in that May 6, 2021 letter. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Okay, well, we've got two things we have to we have to decide. First, we have to decide whether the applicant qualifies for a variance. And we also have to decide whether the applicant qualifies and meets the qualifications or requirements for a special permit. And it strikes me that we should take up the variance discussion first because if there's no variance given, then we can't grant the special permit. As part of the application, there was a multi-page application report prepared by Haley and Ward that very distinctly and nicely lays out the evidence as they see as to why they qualify for being given a variance and why they should also receive a special permit or the town, I should say, should receive a variance and a special permit for this application. With respect to the the variance, it looks like the variance is being requested because the minimum lot area is slightly less than the minimum lot area in the zoning bylaws and that the minimum front yard is only 15 feet where the requirement is is 40. And as we all know, the board has the power to grant a variance when it finds that owing to circumstances relating to the soil conditions, shape or topography of the land and especially affecting such land, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located, a little a literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance of bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner or appellant and that desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. With that being the criteria that we have to use, where would this where would this fall? There's obviously been a town taking of an easement that was a limited, a limited space, which was less than the minimum lot size. Is that correct, Peter? Doug and Greg, I don't mean to just address Peter.
Well, the lot size, the the lot size is actually fairly large because we took the parcel. We took the entire parcel, John. And so.
So the entire, so that the the lot, well, then the lot size listed is 27,501 is not actually the entire?
No, you're correct. I'm sorry. Or I have to look, I have to just briefly look at the application.
Okay. I mean, it it strikes me that if the town only has 20,000, 27,501 square feet, then in fact, the size of the they they the lot can't meet the minimum size and therefore it would fit the requirements of a variance because of it's a shape and topography of the land.
No, you're correct. I just I missed both. I'm getting.
That's all right. I'm I'm just, we don't, we don't deal with variances all that often, so I have to keep looking at the statute or I I lose my my place there. And I'm trying to look at two different documents and not doing real well with that. And with respect to the minimum front yard and the need for a variance for that, obviously, if the size of the the lot, the easement lot doesn't doesn't provide for 40-foot front yard, then again, it would be the topography of the and shape of the lot, shape more than topography probably, that would warrant the granting of, of an easement. And again, I'm just thinking this through out loud, trying to create a, a record because I, I do believe that the application report from Haley Ward that I referenced will be entered as part of the record and that we can rely upon the submissions in that report as a basis for us making our, our decisions. So with respect to the, to the variance, Brian, the way I've sort of laid this out, what the evidence is, any questions about that or concerns about that?
No, I, I don't think I have a problem with that. Looks like they need a water pump and that's a good spot for it. And, and am I understanding that the residents aren't complaining about the station itself, but just the way it looks, but they're okay with putting it there? Is that pretty much what I'm hearing?
Chairman, do you mind if I answer?
By all means, Peter, yes.
Correct. So Brian, the residents, the residents have been advocating, the residents of Independence Lane have been advocating and or has raised the issue going back to, I would say, 2000, before 2013, 2014, complaining about this low water pressure. I am making the assumption that water, that this entire subdivision due to the location probably should have had a pump station put in, in 1997 with the, with, with the onset of this development, right? The residents have allowed this taking to happen. It was a taking because the homeowners association was not theoretically in the time effective because it was defunct over a number of years. But yes, to answer your question in, in the straight, the residents are in favor of the pump station. However, they are concerned about the aesthetic, the appeal is that, as one to drive by this pump station. And the town is, 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 will make the effort as part of this application and is asked to be put into a, if a positive, if a positive decision is made, that the applicant shall side the building to make more of a cohesive environment indoor relationship with the buildings.
Oh, so is the town going to side the building and then put trees all around it?
I think we're going to side the building and then with the neighborhood that abuts it, the neighbor that abuts it to the lower end or who has a Oak Street, who has a Oaks, uh, Oak Street address, there's almost like a berm, Brian. And we're going to plant some plantings along that berm to help, you know, with the visual impact that he may have and some of the sound impairments. Because that's the side that the generator is going to be located on.
That's the small rectangle next to the larger rectangle?
Yeah, and that's the emergency generator. And then, and one of the other things that the town is, is going to do is every week, this emergency generator has to turn on for about 20 minutes and go through a cycle. And we're going to time, we, we have plans to time that during the workday at, at say 11 o'clock or, or whenever. So there's no interruption on a weekend and or a night.
Nice. Okay, I don't think I have any further questions about that then.
Nathan, any questions?
No questions.
Okay. Stu, any questions?
No, sir.
And Chuck, any questions?
No, sir.
Okay, I have, I have no questions at, at this time. Okay, let's let's talk about the granting of, of the variance. It strikes me is that it meets the conditions and that we would, when presented with an appropriate draft decision, we should grant a variance for, for this, for this application. Are people in agreement with that?
I'm in agreement.
Okay, Nathan? Okay, Stu?
In agreement.
And Chuck?
No objections.
Okay. Let's move on then to the issue of the special permit. As Peter set forth in his introduction, the zoning bylaws require that if it's a municipal entity, that they require a special permit for development in an RA zone. And as we know from our dealing with special permits, the board has to make certain findings in order to, to grant the special permit. And the criteria that we have to consider under section 9.3.2, we can grant the special permit only upon written determination that the adverse effects that the proposed use will not outweigh its beneficial impacts to the town or the neighborhood in view of the particular characteristics of the site and of the proposal in relation to that site. And in addition to any specific factors that may be set forth in the bylaw, then the determination shall can include consideration of each of the following six points. Number one is community needs served by the proposal. And in referencing the application report by, submitted by Haley and Ward, they do address that that issue. And obviously it would provide a, I would suggest it provides, definitely meets a community need because it will supply reliable and higher residential water pressure and critically public safety, increasing the flow capacity, traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading. There should be no increase in traffic, I would suggest. I believe the plan calls for one parking space to allow for someone who needs to service the unit to park. Three would be adequacy of utilities and other public services. I would suggest there's adequate electrical, as Mr. Eldridge referenced. This particular location was close to, I don't recall what kind of an electrical box it was, but it was a three electrical box as opposed to the other possible site. Four, neighborhood character and social structures. It doesn't really fit within the neighborhood character of residential buildings. However, I would suggest that the placing of siding on the building and the surrounding plantings would make it as close to fitting within the residential neighborhood as one could expect. Impacts, impacts on the natural environment seem to be a very small site footprint and soil disturbance is going to be rather minimal concerning the whole area. And potential fiscal impact, including impact on town services, tax base and employment. I would suggest there probably is not any significant fiscal impact on town services or fiscally, certainly not on the tax base or employment. It seemed to me that this project does meet all the requirements for a special, special permit if we were to decide we wish to grant a special permit for this and to let the good folks up on Independence Lane get some adequate water pressure. Brian, your thoughts?
I'm in favor of granting a special permit to this facility.
And Nathan, your thoughts?
I agree.
And Stu?
I would vote to approve.
Okay, and Chuck?
I'm in favor.
Okay. There's been reference to that May 6, 2021 letter from Haley Ward to Doug Small setting forth the, basically the agreement to, that the town and the neighbors have reached concerning the town's development of this project and the commitment the town is making. The board has been asked by the town to make the item set forth in the letter, a condition of the special permit grant. And I think it might be appropriate for the record, just for me to read briefly, it's not too long, the the three conditions. Condition number one, install shrubs along the south and east side of the site to provide a natural blind for the pump station. A, on the east side, the shrubs will be installed on the existing berm to provide additional height to the new shrubs. B, the town of Ashland will be responsible for the landscaping at the site. C, the town agrees that when the station and generator are installed, they will review the site lines and lay out the proposed shrub locations. At that time, residents can have input into the locations and possibly the type of shrubs. D, as of this letter, the proposed shrub would be a low maintenance spruce, quote, white cornica, unquote, or evergreen shrub. Two, the station is installed with a colored metal siding that is designed for residential neighborhoods. The residents were concerned with the actual look of the siding and whether it will fit into the neighborhood. A, the town agrees to install the vinyl siding after the station is installed at the site. Otherwise, a change to vinyl at the factory will delay the delivery date. Three, the other concern discussed at the site visit was the noise level produced by the proposed generator. We have reviewed the generator submittal and they report a noise level of 73 decibels at a distance of 23 feet. Decibel level provides an indication of the pressure or forcefulness the sound makes. To give an indication of the proposed generators, 73 decibel level, a normal conversation can be in the range of 60 to 70 decibels. The proposed shrubs will provide additional sound deadening. A, the town can set the approximate 20-minute generator exercise time to occur every Tuesday at 11:00 a.m. This time can be adjusted if this becomes an issue with local residents. Those were the conditions that we have been asked to impose in addition to the usual conditions we impose in a special permit that we grant. And they frankly all seem reasonable to me. And I thank the neighbors for working with Haley and Ward and the town to come to an agreement on those. And I for one would be very happy to put those conditions into a, into a special permit. Brian, okay with that?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Nathan, any, how about you?
No issues.
Okay, Stu?
I'm in agreement.
Okay, and Chuck?
In agreement, yes.
Okay. Now, as part of our usual procedure, I would ask Emma to draft a decision consistent with what we have, what we have discussed, both variance and a special permit and have it available prior to our meeting on May 24th, at which point we can hopefully take a vote to approve both the special permit and the, the variance. Would that be okay? Emma's shaking her head.
Sorry, yes.
Okay.
Prepare the drafts decision as discussed tonight, and I will send it to the board in advance.
Thank you very much. Okay, if there is nothing else on this matter, I would entertain a motion to continue this hearing to our next meeting Monday, May 24th at 7:00 p.m.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay. Hi, John Trefethan, approve?
Hi, Brian Forrestall, approve.
Hi, Nathan Band, approve.
Hi, Stuart Siegel, approve.
And I heard Chuck approving as well there. I forgot to mention that at the hearing, for the hearing, that the three members of the board, Brian Forrestall, Nathan Band and myself, John Trefethan, will be the voting members in the, on the decision. Okay, that concludes this, this hearing for the, for the evening. Mr. Eldridge and Mr. Small, Mr. Small, it feels very strange not to just call you Doug, so. But we have formalities here.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry if I missed a couple steps there, but.
No, you, you, you were fine. We thank you very much for that. And Peter, thank you very much for your presentation and helping this matter as well.
Yeah. Thank you for your patience, guys.
Yes, thank you, all of you.
Thank you.
We're getting there. We're getting there. Okay, next item on the agenda, we have minutes from two meetings, both April 12th and April 26th. Let's deal with the April 12th minutes first. Anybody any questions, proposed changes?
I don't have any.
Okay. I had pointed out to Emma that among the people present were also present were Peter Magic, our town planner, and I think Peter certainly should get approval for, for appearing and recognition for appearing at a nighttime meeting. But other than that, I had no, no changes to proposed questions. Whoops. Okay, every, is there a motion to approve the minute? Whoops, Peter?
Nope, I'm leaving.
Oh, I'm sorry. Goodbye.
I'll see you guys later. I need to go get dinner.
Thank you.
Is there, is there a motion to approve the, the minutes of April 12?
I make a motion to approve the April 12th minutes as amended.
And is there a second approval, a second? I forget where I am.
I have a second.
Hi, John Trefethan, I'm in favor.
Hi, Brian Forrestall, I'm in favor.
Hi, Nathan Band, in favor.
Hi, Stuart Siegel, I'm in favor.
I think I should abstain. I don't think I was there.
You're, you're right, Chuck. Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to the minutes, easy for me to say, of the April 26th, 2021 meeting. Anybody have any questions or corrections? I had none. If not, is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion. Will you approve the minutes?
Thank you, Chuck. Is there a second? Hi, John Trefethan, second. All of, hi, John Trefethan, vote in favor.
Hi, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor.
Hi, Nathan Band, in favor.
Hi, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor.
Good.
Okay. It just occurred to me that with the hearing on Independence Lane, I didn't call for public comment.
I could suggest since the hearing is. I could suggest since the hearing is
We will do it next, we will do it at the next meeting. We will open up with public comment. And my apologies, Mark. Okay, any, anything else on the agenda, administrative matters or anything, Emma?
No, no updates at this time.
Good, then. How about a motion by some, somebody to?
I move readjourned.
Thank you. Is there a second? The dog is saying yes.
I second the motion.
Okay, I, John Trefethan, approve.
I, Brian Forrestall, approve.
I, Nathan Band, approve.
Hi, Chuck.
Hi, Stuart Siegel. Sorry, Chuck.
Okay, very good. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, WACA. And have a good evening.